How much time do you need to out it before the next meeting?
Erica said February 1st. I think we have plenty of time. Yeah, we can work out the other stuff, but.
Okay, so it's an action for everybody to come up with ordinances that they want this to fall under by February 1st. Okay, next item is consider approval of application for payment number six.
So we are, this was previously tabled at the December meeting. We are still waiting for lower construction to make a site visit to rectify some of the issues. That is to occur tomorrow finally. If it's acceptable to council, I'd ask that you approve the payment application so we can close the project out contingent upon satisfactory completion of staff.
I'll make that motion.
I'll serve.
Okay, we have a motion to allow the bill to be paid provided Borough staff is satisfied with quality of any corrective repairs. Sound good?
Yep.
Any discussion?
Can you detail that punch list that is a problem?
There really is one main issue that has to deal with the occupancy sensors throughout the building that turn on and off the lights. It seems small, but it's creating issues, so, and we've asked that it be changed multiple times. At the last point.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, my vote is aye. Okay, under new business, is there anything under unfinished business? And under new business, consider approval of a resolution appointing and reaffirming planning commission appointees.
Question, do I need to obtain from this because my name is on it?
No.
It's not paid.
It's a conflict of interest.
Yeah, it's a conflict of interest.
You don't have to be able, you'd have to have to. Why?
You'd have to accuse yourself if you were real estate agent.
My question is, why do three of the five expire in 2025? Aren't they staggered?
Well, they were to be staggered at one point, but somehow that.
That was a time in the.
Yeah.
Can that be addressed or fixed?
You could always make one stagger down, the ones you're appointing.
Yeah.
And then you have to just reappoint, like you could do that. And this is a resolution, so there's no reason to change that.
So why don't we think about changing that so we don't lose one and a half a bit at once?
Yeah, that would make sense. What does the Borough Code say? The Borough Code is already explicit about something.
The MPC, the MPC says, March of Borough Code, right? Because it's the planning commission?
Yeah.
They're three, they're three year, all four years. Zoning hearing.
Also the MPC.
Make one twenty-seven and twenty-eight?
Well, you can't go out, you can't go out far. Yeah, can't go out far as four years, but you could make it.
Make one of them twenty-six, so there's two twenty-six.
And you go twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-four?
Can't go more than twenty-six.
Make two twenty-six, two twenty-five.
Right, right.
Yeah, that works.
Which one?
And Ryan twenty-four is. Top two.
We'll keep the tracer ribbon longer, twenty-twenty-six. How about that?
Keep Terry as long as you can, put her twenty-four.
Tracer ribbon. That's what I said.
So two twen-, top two are twenty-six, the next two are twenty-five, and Ryan will reappoint him anyway, so make him twenty-four. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, my vote is aye. What, don't like it?
Did I miss the motion at first and the second?
Yeah, I kind of might have missed that.
I move, I move you to that.
Yeah, well, I should make a motion.
Second, I'll second Dave.
Still we're all aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, zoning hearing board, there are three-year appointments, and it's twenty-five, twenty-four, and twenty-three. Motion?
I move you approve the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, my vote is aye. Are we still advertising for order?
We still need an alternate.
Yeah. Okay. For our rec. commission, twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-five.
Valerie Strange left in February of 2022. She resigned.
Yeah, so strike Valerie and move Richard up to, make him twenty-five, and Lisa twenty-four. So we have twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-four, Valerie struck. Entertained a motion?
Would you approve with the, with the changes?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Can I add, the new business, Amber and I talked about property maintenance code, Board of Appeals. We have two people that are, that have expired. I've asked him to put that on the agenda for next month since we admitted that. Okay?
Yep.
Apparently we won't. Actually, we call that de minimis activity, just do it if you want.
Well, we need to check real person to make sure that they're still.
Consider approval of application for payment one from Kinsley Construction for the crosswalk improvements. The payment is fifty-four thousand, sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
I have a couple, a couple of questions, maybe Andrew can answer this. Do you know when the shop drug for approval, this stuff that's been going down there? I mean, they've been working on it for a while, and you know, there's not a lot of activity here.
So what they're waiting on now is they're having trouble scheduling the boarding machine.
Back to, back, still back to that?
Yeah, yeah.
So then I, I, the next question is, well, they have a schedule and completely worked, but I guess they don't because unless they can get under their stream.
That's the holdup right now, yeah.
All right, and then the last question, I guess, is the retainage for, they got a couple, I guess it's concrete items that they want a hundred percent for, but does the contract include a five percent retainage until, until they're finished and then the retention gets released?
Right, it would be five percent.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's just how they.
That's how they, where they have to fish, yeah.
So are we paying this change order of five thousand in addition to the original one hundred ninety-four thousand to make it one hundred ninety-nine thousand?
That's correct, there, there was additional work that was needed at Franklin Street for grading. So if you notice, that whole area had to be paved and kind of regraded, and that was something that had to be done before those crosswalks were laid in, so yes.
So instead of costing us.
You're passing a number.
One ninety-nine.
So instead of costing us sixty-nine thousand, it's going to cost us out-of-pocket seventy-four thousand? Does Trail Town is twenty thousand? You're right, you got twenty, did you get twenty thousand for Trail Town towards these crosswalks?
Correct.
And then I had somewhere that the cost to New Freedom was sixty-nine thousand dollars. Is that wrong?
I'm not sure, because what, we're using ARCA funds for this, so I'm not sure.
So that costs us nothing?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it would be the offset of, yeah, I know, I apologize if that is not indicated, but yeah, it's, it's.
Go here. Save the meeting.
I'm not sure where that number came from, because no matter what, I'm hiding back into that number.
Okay, so, so the, where, there it goes. So the hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar project isn't costing us anything? Because we're using ARCA funds in Trail Town that gave us twenty thousand.
Between ARCA funds and Trail Town, it's being paid for completely.
Okay.
I get a motion.
I move we pay the fifty-four thousand dollars.
Why, thank you. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Posed, my vote is aye. So let's go.
I have nothing. Nevermind.
Manager?
Try to get through just a couple items here pretty quick. We are working to finalize the first edition of the municipal newsletter. We hope to have that out by the end of the month, and that'll go to all addresses within New Freedom Borough. In December, we did work on submitting, well, we did submit for phase one improvements at the wastewater treatment plant for that grant. We also submitted the recycling performance grant, which was due by the end of the year. Already talked about the stormwater swale, we hope to have feedback back from U.S. Fish and Wildlife by mid-January. Crosswalk improvement project that we just discussed currently, they are a little behind schedule, waiting that boring machine, and it's really up to Kinsley and their, their sub to get that scheduled. We did enter all of the 2023 budget information into our financial software in December. And just an update on the radar speed signs, if you notice, both of those signs were installed in December and placed on Logan Drive, one facing north, one facing south. They were turned on on December thirteenth, and to date, we received average speeds of fourteen and fifteen miles an hour with an eighty-fifth percentile speed respectively of twenty-two and twenty-one miles an hour. So that eighty-fifth percentile speed is usually what the police departments will look to if there actually is enforcement needed. Average vehicle count per day is around two hundred and fifty each direction, so we'll say around five hundred vehicles traveling that road. More traveling out of the borough than coming into the borough. I will say, I think these results might be a little skewed with the location, so we're going to work with Public Works and actually flip the signs so they're catching speed the other direction, which gives that motorist a longer run to the sign rather than a shorter distance, so again, this is a little bit of experimentation until we get these positioned and see how that data comes back hopefully next month.
Do the signs automatically know which way they're facing, or is that something that you program?
We program that, yeah, the sign knows where it's at, but not which direction it's facing. And other than that, we're already working to close out 2022 and submit all of the required state and local reports.
The council doesn't get to review the newsletter? That'd be good to see it.
That's another step in getting it sent out, but that's up to this.
When were you going to send it out?
We're up by the end of January, as long as we can get everything flooded up and working with the, to work with the company to do the loan.
Between the time it's finished and the time it's spelled out, whatever.
Is it spelled out clearly, the trash situation? It's been a slow drip of information getting out, like they can put in, you know, as many recyclable as you want, or, you know, what, the things that have come up along the way, is there something clear that can just communicate with the residents better on how the trash is changing and their concerns that they've raised?
And that they can request the smaller bins.
That's what caused like it up for, and every time they bring it up, council says, yeah, it wasn't worth it good and so forth. So I think, I thought a savvy citizen alert was going to go out from the December meeting to kind of clarify it more for the people, but so there's not going to be anything talked about trash?
What was to go out?
Just a clarification of, of the, of the change, and you know, like, I didn't know that we could put out as many recyclable bins as we, I can put out three recycle bins, because I have three, I always thought it was, you know, the one, maybe that could calm some people down that are thinking that they, the one toter isn't going to be able to hold as, as much, because now they can put out more, you know, I mean, just, I, I think, I, my only one thing that there needs to be better communication with the residents on this change.
And I thought we covered that in the last meeting, though, when the people were here talking.
Sure, those handful of people know, but everybody else out there that's going to get the newsletter to their home? Well, forty-five or so people might watch that, but this lead newsletter is going to every home, wouldn't you want to talk to every home?
Well, when, when did they send out the letter from Penn Waze? Didn't that go out beginning of November?
No, no, it was the end of November into early December.
Yeah, December.
Didn't the letter say unlimited recycle?
Or even the small toter now that we currently we have.
I think that's going to be important for a lot of communities that they know they can get a small toter.
You can communicate better about it, so maybe help them.
A small toter was just a, an item that was even added.
Yeah, it's coming after the fact that, but they were willing to.
Again, I, our concern here too is we're making sure with the residents that they understand that small toter is now your trash bin, so you need to make sure that you're going to be able to fit your trash in it. It's not going to be something where you're going to call us a month later and say, now I have a big one, well.
Let's, it's going to be a week's worth, you're not getting it twice a week, let's.
Right, I mean, we want to make sure, it's just like people that say they need two trash services now. What we're informing people is make sure that you actually need that, give yourself a couple weeks to see how it goes, and get the bin and utilize it, and we're from there, but don't just jump into this and.
Why don't you say it just like that?
And that's what, exactly what we've been telling.
That's a perfect way to say it.
People is.
A lot of people are upset because of yard waste, well, the yard waste really wasn't ever supposed to go in there, you know, I mean.
And I agree on that, that's always.
And we do pick up yard waste, I didn't know we did that in April.
Yeah, but we don't know what's inside the trench again.
And, you know, maybe reiterating the times of the month like we did last month, said that there was four or five months during the year that you do pick up the yard waste.
The, the goal was to, we were going to pull information from the flyer and put it into the newsletter that Penn Waze already sent out. The flyer that Penn Waze already sent out, we're going to pull information into the newsletter.
Okay. Anything else? The crap of the garbage at one seventeen Monita, that's down to two bags.
Is that code enforcement?
Oh, is that, yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess I could come up with that, okay.
The additional items that you have tonight, you have the copy in front of you of the 2023 year-end financial report, and this is obviously un-audited, and what we did is broke out each fund with the budget versus actual, and provided some explanations on funds that were over or under budget on revenues and expenditures. Obviously, I just received that tonight. If, if there are questions that arise when you're reviewing that, you know, everyone, and you can now provide a response back. If you need further information, if you'd like to discuss it at the next meeting as well.
Too much background to everyone?
I understand, we just have to make sure that we were trying to get everything closed out by the end of the year, Thanksgiving and everything else before assembling that information.
Think we should mention that the Tasteful Occasions lease was pushed thirty days, they asked for an extension since we'd given it to them so late in December with the holidays and whatnot. And since we granted the senior center an extension, we went hand and granted the thirty days for the lease.
To do what in those thirty days?
Decide whether or not to sign it.
Is the section that says they only get the key to their kitchen going to be put in there?
How is that though?
What I mentioned on the draft? It is.
Section ten.
Ten. Do you have the lease there?
I don't, I have the minutes. That's what you mentioned earlier, the senior center.
Section ten does that, it says, we see Shabie giving a key to access the center through the main door and be given a key to the leased property.
Right, their leased property are the, are the rooms that they occupy. That was the wording that was.
But the minutes here clarified a key to the kitchen in section ten, that Andy said in the meeting that they would not have a key, both that they would have a key to their kitchen, one key to the kitchen.
Says given a key to the leased property.
But he specified kitchen, but it's not here.
What are you, so that it can't get a key to anything but their kitchen?
Their leased property is everything they're paying for.
I understand, but that they only be able to use their kitchen, so that you had said at the meeting that they would only get a key to their kitchen, not.
Right, but that was only for clarification for discussion, that, the lease says they only get a key to their, what they're leasing, they're not leasing the other kitchen, so they doesn't have a kitchen.
Well, it says clarified here, but it's not clarified here.
But it is clarified there because they're not getting a key to anything, they're not leasing, and they're not leasing the other kitchen. They're not getting a key to the senior center, they're not getting a key to the, I mean, all the other rooms, so I think we're okay. Okay, Mr. Mayor, oh, did you want to talk about the proposal for the, yeah?
I do have a proposal in front of you to provide auditing and financial statement preparation services to New Freedom Borough. This is separate than the current auditor and CPA firm that provides services to New Freedom Borough.
That's cop an hour and whatever?
Yeah.
Right?
Correct.
They would replace that.
It would replace them, yeah. I went out and requested this proposal from SCK based on some frustration that I had with the current firm and not understanding that there needed to be changes to the 2021 financial statements that were incorrect. We've recently gone through that with People's Security, which is the general obligation note holder to clarify some of those statements, and we're just not communicating and getting those changes, and there's still mistakes in those statements that I'd like to get created or, or fixed. I think SCK provides a stronger array of testing for revenues, expenditures, and internal controls. I have full faith in them that they'll be able to provide us accurate and compliant financial statements. And obviously, that includes everybody's buzzword, which is transparency to the residents, to make sure that obviously those controls are in place and those testers are being completed every year. They also provide an array of services pretty much at no additional cost throughout the year, for if we have issues with QuickBooks or we need amendments to, to statements and things. So I just want, if you have the proposal in front of you, it's definitely an increased cost. I'm not sure how the current auditor is able to even prepare the DCD report at the price that they're currently charging, but that's for them to worry about.
What is the difference in cost?
I, full disclosure, this is about three times the, the cost, and this is normal for full financial statements and audit. This is typical price, again, I'm not sure.
It's about seven K for them and.
Yeah. I'll say, yeah.
So you go with your band board?
Pretty much, yeah.
What is the frustration you're having?
Frustration has to deal with the general obligation note proceeds that were pulled to pay for the water and sewer repair project with Jayden Bradford. Those revenues, which is the pull from the general obligation note, are not being included because the auditor is arguing that the assets are not capitalized. But when you break them out separately, which shows that the borough lost one point five million dollars in 2021, which is not an accurate representation of the income statement of the borough for that year. And we received updated reports that still had numerous inaccuracies with actually duplicating numbers multiple times in that statement. I feel like I'm driving under the bus, but I've asked multiple times.
Well, it's a legal issue, isn't it, whether, if they're not paying us early?
What'd they say, did they have any, any response to the?
I've asked a couple different times, I've received a couple different subsequent reports, and the last one that I received I thought was going to address the issue, but revenues have been double counted, expenditures have been double counted within numbers, and it's, they're not accurate.
And you said People's Bank has.
People's Bank and Security, which is general obligation note, has concerns as the note holder because the, the income statement shows that we lost one point five million dollars.
And that's a bigger issue than anything, whether accurate or flexible or not, but that's, that's a bigger issue if weren't you.
That's what I'm saying, isn't it a legal problem now they're not doing, they're not representing what they're supposed to be doing?
Right, which is why he's asking.
So if your competency level in them isn't comfortable, where are the competitive bids of accounting firms that we can look at?
And I can go out and get those, I, short timeframe, just went to SCK because I haven't worked, had a working relationship with them in the past on multiple different audits and asked for a proposal.
I don't necessarily have a problem changing accounting firms, but I think that as a council, we need to do our fiduciary responsibility and not just go to the first one that's three times the cost of what we're paying. And then it is a little concerning, I will put it out there that there's a personal relationship that you have with this company when we have to manage this borough and we're bringing in a company that you have a personal relationship with to oversee.
It's not a personal relationship, he's just dealt, he's just dealt with them before, that would be, I mean, that's be kind of like we all have a personal relationship with Kinsley, and we all have a personal, you know.
The, the SCK team assigned to your engagement has previously had a successful working relationship with Andy Schaefer. Like, they refer you like we met in the grocery store, it's not formal, and I'm talking about a personal relationship.
I believe in his capacity as the manager of Spring River.
Well, sure, but I just, it's, it's a concern.
Time sensitive is a concern to bring in a new, a new counter, accounting.
PCD reports do people first.
That's not, that's going to take some time, ain't it?
How long have we had the current company?
As time is coming. Yeah.
What do you mean, as time is company?
It's very low-level audit.
How long have we had?
I would say probably fifteen years.
Fifteen plus years?
And we're looking at what, a total of nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty for 2022?
Right.
So we don't have to bid it.
Well, it's professional services.
Personal service.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Do you, are you implying that because of a past relationship, you don't think that they would accurately report if they would find a deficiency or inconsistency?
No, she's implying that you're taking this company and giving them the business because you have a personal relationship with it.
Could be both.
Or both.
I mean, you're, you're questioning a CPA, I mean, that, that means that they would be lying in that case. I'm not firing for that.
We're human, people are human, I mean, you know, would I think that they would do that? I sure hope they wouldn't do that, but when you bring somebody on board that has a standing personal relationship, working with somebody to oversee finances, I would be more comfortable with somebody that doesn't have a relationship to carry out the duties.
And that's fine, that's what we're doing.
Okay, what do you need us to do? Do you want to go out and find another bid?
That's up to council.
Andy?
What I'm asking, like.
I, I do.
Isn't it also important that Andy has confidence in the company that's doing the audit? I mean, he's already figured out that the one that's doing it now is doing it erroneously.
Yeah, I, I think that's all important, but to Erica's point, like, I don't, it's not going to hurt us to go out and get.
Another bid.
Three bids, bring me. Three bids, bring me three bids.
I also don't think that there should be an accusation of a personal relationship. There's a professional relationship, and I think there's a difference between the two.
Mark Dur, the county couldn't get an auditor if Mark Dur was still the county manager. Because he's worked with everybody, every county agency in your town.
And it's concerning, and then like nine pages in the back that's addressed to members of our council, and it talks all over the place about you're responsible for, your responsibilities include.
Yeah.
I mean.
Every R and P will say that.
You know, that's.
That's your duty.
A bit concerning.
Why don't you get one, you know, depending on how long it would take, and one or two checkpoints just so that you have something else to look at, I guess.
If you need some kind of scope or work or description of work, what they're pushing for. Yeah. Make, make sure it's comparable to what this is.
And it was just a bit concerning that we made from time to time and depending on the circumstances, use third-party service providers to service your contract.
Yeah, you, you'll get that in every single other proposal. It just allows them to use subcontractors, somebody to come in and.
That's essentially what Kinsley's doing with part of this, like, they're subcontracting out work. Is that, is that a fair amount?
Our lab does that on testing for water and wastewater. They have to subcontract out sometimes because they can't handle the volume of certain testing.
Well, I think wastewater is a little bit different than all of our financial information.
Okay. Okay, everybody's got.
A little bit more?
Good.
If you have any questions about the. Please take some time and go over the twelve, four, twenty-two to twelve, thirty-one, twenty-two, report the blue. Because that gives you everything for the past year, all of our incidents, our time records, and shows that basically we were under target for our P P Us.
Sorry, which one were you talking about?
Twelve, four, twenty-two, twelve, thirty-one, twenty-two, the second one. That, that's a full year's information. The first one only goes through the vendor, this goes through the entire year. So just take a little bit of time so you know where we are.
So we were under target for this year.
We were under target for this year.
It was minimal, but. By eleven, eleven percent.
Yep, because, now, this is one year. You've got to remember, we're taking a three-year average, which did not include the second half of 2022. Okay, and I did bring that down a little bit because there were some errors in Buck's calculations. It duplicated. But look at our new and improved, you can go over the balance sheet if you want. Look at our new improved final.
What page are you on?
One, one.
Seven hundred, six thousand, three hundred and forty-seven.
It's in your addition, your additional packet. Because the budget top-level summary did change. We went down, I think it was seven thousand dollars.
Seven, ten?
Okay, so the, 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 the amount stayed the same. Of our expenses, well, no, they went up a little bit, but our portion went down a little bit. And this should be as close as we could get to, to where it should be.
This is the final numbers.
So we're, we're in good shape, what?
This is the final numbers.
This is the final numbers.
The final final?
This is the final numbers, yes.
But there may be a final, final, final.
No.
There may be a couple of odds and ends that pop in from time to time. The commission meeting, we voted to carry over vacations that haven't been able to be used due to COVID sickness, officers being out, losing an officer. We allowed them to carry that over till May.
Has the staffing improved? No COVID, it's obviously equal, but you said they downed an officer.
Yes, we are back, we are down an officer. He had, when they interviewed, did a ride-along, they did give an offer to a new, a new officer. He is subject to his polygraph, psychological, and physical exam. And if he accepts it, he'll be hired. What we did do is we allowed the committee to offer any lateral. In other words, they're not gonna start him at the lowest rate. If he's a lieutenant someplace else, they'll bring him up to a higher rate. We're not gonna try to, you know, nickel and dime somebody. So hopefully, we'll have that taken care of. That's gonna have a lot to do with no more overtime. They're looking to purchase some new shields. They're six to seven thousand dollars a piece, we only have two. They'd like to have three, possibly four shields. Now, you know what I'm talking about, the shields, if you saw January sixth? That's so they can break through the windows here and have something that won't.
There's been two barricade situations within the last month.
So hopefully, we'll be able to work that into the budget this year. Intergovernmental is no more, we're done meeting until we figure out what's going on with Glen Rock. You all have a copy of the letter that the commission sent to Glen Rock. I'm gonna summarize it, it's late, I'm not gonna read the whole thing. Basically, what we're saying is we have an intergovernmental agreement. We expect you to stick to it. If you're gonna withdraw, withdraw. If there is no allowance for.
He put in, he put into words what we all agreed on at our last meeting.
Yeah, basically, he did.
It matched us up very nicely, so.
Yeah, he did, he did a good job. Take, take that home, take, read it. Under the, under the finance committee, Brittany, who's the mayor of Stewartstown, is now gonna be the treasurer of, for finance. And she and I are going to co-chair the finance committee for the next year. K nine had twenty-nine deployments for the year. Unfortunately, we've had quite a number of crazy people. I hate to put it that way, but that's, we've had some psychological problems with residents in all of our municipalities. We've had several O Ds, we had two in the last month. I don't, I think one of them did not survive.
Both did not.
Both did not survive.
In Freedom and Stewartstown.
Shrewsbury Township had a stabbing at Forest Lakes. Maryland Line had a perimeter established, and they asked our officers to help. And they were very grateful that we could stand in for a limited amount of time until their officers could come up. We're having a major problem, there's no form of national communication or even statewide communication, interstate communication. We can't communicate with Maryland, Maryland can't communicate with us on the radios. I'm gonna go to Kristen Phillips Hill and see if we can't try to establish something on our end to, to have that taken care of. Because when the boy was lost up at Summit Grove, we couldn't communicate with the helicopter. They couldn't help, they couldn't communicate with us. They had to go through our state police, then the state police had to come back to our local.
The helicopter came out of Maryland?
Yes, because they had infrared. Unfortunately, it just picked up deer and sheep and any kind of animal and, you know, it was. But we've gotta work on communications, Chief is, is trying to get that accomplished.
Has there been any kind of update on that event at Summit Grove?
Not really. I mean, there is nothing to really update. He was in the pool. They don't know whether he came back later, they missed him the first time he came back and went in, or he was there the entire time, they just don't know. They do know the, the water was murky. There were like forty, fifty kids in there at one time during the day, and it's kind of like a bathtub, you know? By the time you get four kids out of the bathtub, you had a rig. And it was not until they took a piece of equipment and put, did L E D lights actually down into the water, and they dropped a rock and, and found out that they couldn't see the rock on the bottom of the pool. And they got divers in and they finally did find it. But that's, that's pretty much, I think that's all. Do you have anything?
The officer that has been given, the offer, is a Baltimore officer. He lives in Shrewsbury in his mid-girties. So, his experience.
All right, one, one question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The last two month in police reports had thefts for New Freedom at four, one month, three the other. But back in September, in the November, twenty-two, is that right?
Yes, that was the car break-ins. Automobile break-ins where, you know, people left their doors open and they scooped out whatever they could get, that's what that was, which is gonna put.
One incident.
One incident, correct. One complaint that they did have, they have, since we did, did the roof, they've had three flat tires on there.
Yeah, I asked Chief to provide me that information so I can get that to the contractor.
Will, will they do anything about that with insurance?
They need to.
They're gonna, they're gonna find out when they do that.
And they've, they've actually gone out and swept the.
And the roofing company.
The parking lot several times to look for nails, but it is roofing nails that they're finding in the tires. Ted, so you have any questions on the engineer progress report?
What is the 2022 paving project that says not completed?
No work completed during this period, that project is done and closed out.
That's what I thought, so there's nothing going on for something. And then what is the street stormwater on North Second?
That's out.
What's going on there?
That's a request from a resident where the stormwater comes off of North Second Street, goes down through the property, there is a catch basin there. And what we had looked at was, basically, we moved, working the Penn Dock through, moved that catch basin, installing another catch basin out on Second Street, and running a new pipe down to, basically down towards the rail trail.
Is that our expense?
It's our expense.
It's our area? Okay, and what is the street sweep, I think I've asked this before, the Franklin?
Yeah, that's just a street, street scape design along Franklin Street that we were looking at, having warehouse put together just to create a scope so that we can go after grant funding. This would improve all of the curb and sidewalk, all the A D A ramps, and would provide some aesthetic improvements as well.
When you talk about sidewalks, do what to them?
Replace them.
They weren't done with our replacement?
Only spot replacements though.
How, how far would that go, Andrew?
Constitution Avenue to most likely Front Street.
Who's replacing that, the borough or?
It would be on the borough, but we would, we'd be going after grant funding.
Would that just be straight concrete, or could we do a nice stamped?
It would be a curb and probably a stamped and then sidewalk, depending on.
Like the crosswalk kind of?
Yeah, depending on what width is available between the houses and the curb line.
Because that really does look nice if you.
Why would Berkington be responsible for the sidewalk?
Well, they're only, they're only responsible for the area that they're impacted, and they have a public security bond for just that area. This would be outside of that.
Like, does it, don't residents have the responsibility of their sidewalks?
They do, but if we can do grant funding, we're not putting that burden on the residents.
So we're looking to do the Franklin street loop-in with grant funding only?
There would be a match required, but we could possibly offset that with additional funding. But this is all preliminary.
Can I, can I ask a question? Can we go in with another borough with grant funding for sidewalks? I don't know if you're aware, Shrewsbury's trying to do their sidewalks.
They're doing that with Shrewsbury Township, but they're in touch.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, we would be too remote, I, I feel that.
Okay, I didn't know how that worked.
The goal here is to do Franklin Street before we do Main Street because Franklin is a borough road. And it is a state road, which requires all additional hurdles, as we're well aware of.
That'd be three years in the making.
Right.
Okay, anything else on the warehouse report? Error report?
Actually, I'm sorry, I do have one more question about the, the Second Street thing that Eric was talking about. Is that near Ashley Court or Ashley?
No, it would be more towards where Front Street comes out from the townhouses, at its front, right?
North, north front.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the other side.
Because there, there's a number of places between here and railroad before you get to the end of the borough where the, the road almost looks like it's getting ready to collapse into, into the creek.
Yeah, that, that needs to be a stream restoration project down through that area.
Okay, who, is that a state?
Well, a good portion of that property is in by the borough.
Do we get into D E P then?
Oh, absolutely, that's, that's D E P, Army Corps Engineers, but.
Ryan, have you talked about down closer to Cursman Road? Where that.
Yes.
Like underneath the guardrail, the state just did that, they flipped that in. They put some.
Okay, because the other one, there's a drain located on the opposite side of the street close to Ashley Court.
Okay, yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's running right where the sewer line runs down through, so.
Yeah, it's, if you're actually staying in Laken, you, you probably almost risk, you know, putting your car out of alignment or something else.
Well, see, there's an old spring house there, that's, I think that's causing some of the problem there.
Oh, I had the fire company mention that now that you said that because they're having problems with the fire truck. If they go over off the side of the road, they're afraid it's gonna pull them down into. They've had some, a couple of incidents there.
Yeah, state roads, so.
We can, I can make a call.
We told them about it years ago, they just don't, you know, they're gonna do nothing about it.
Until a fire truck tips over and.
Yes.
I turned the page, what's the R and M update?
We have, we have not received any revised plans, any communication.
So there, there's no meeting for January scheduled?
There's a meeting scheduled for January, but it does not include.
Damn.
Oh, I'm sorry, don't know.
R and M?
Yeah, there's no, that is not included on the planning permission agenda for later this month.
Yeah, so that there's no meetings at all with R and M in January?
No. Unless they were to call tomorrow and ask, you know, resubmit and meet with the municipal engineer, there's no meeting scheduled.
You have any questions on engineering?
Was this for Arrow?
Yep.
Yeah. The first one, the option for the grant application, that's for what grant? Is that for the wastewater grant?
No, it's the underwater services.
Jimmy Dennis finalized the construction cost for the grant? What? How much is that grant, what is it?
That's still in the works.
It's still in the works, we don't know the amount of the grant to address the P H issue.
Not, their, their cost opinion has been finalized, but we needed to put everything in for grant format, and that has not been finalized. and that has not been finalized.
Andrew, can you email me that, if you have it, that spreadsheet with those full tank pressures that they referenced there in the first plan?
And are you talking about the September fifteenth? Provided a PSA for the services of the...
The underwater services, the spreadsheet that they did for full tank pressures.
Is that the fourth, the fourth bullet?
First one.
First one?
First bullet.
Oh, the full tank up there. Anything on the slide, I don't think there's anything on the slide or tank, but anything, is it price looking at last, what?
Looking at the feasibility, whether it needs to happen or not.
Our overall view is if we don't have to, we ain't gonna, right?
Is all of this on a general engineering services? Is all of that in relations to the Franklin swell? Is this saying all the stuff that they did?
The ones that are in...
Like the lighter, the lighter gray? Well, there's no, there's, we have to do that.
Yeah.
Well, then there's the swell, the second one is lighter gray, the Franklin swell.
That's the same.
And Franklin Street rehabilitation project, is that the swell, is that the street scape?
That's grayed out, which means it occurred out of this reporting period. I think what they're referring to there is that they reviewed, no, that would be, I'm sorry, that would be the swell project, because they pulled the survey, we asked for the survey data from Berdington, and they were provided with that in order to submit the permit.
Okay, so rehabilitation is swell?
It is, yeah.
And the swell project is the dip between the two units, correct? That I've explained before that used to fill with water? Is that between the townhouses?
No, this is still the Hitty and Russell property.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, actually, all, all of that except the third bullet point down relates to the conveyance pipe and the swell between the Hitty, Russell, and Berdington property.
And for that digital scanning, has Arrow provided the estimate yet?
No.
No?
No, they're actually hoping to come on site next week or the following week to go over everything, to take a look at the amount of plans that we have to provide that estimate.
Is there any water?
Donnie, how has well one did since it's come back online?
Good.
Good, no problem?
Good, no problems before.
Good.
Wastewater treatment plant?
How was the damage done at the lower building? On the second?
That was a result of, there was conduit underneath the building that at some point broke and allowed mud and water to enter the conduit, which in turn shorted out the wires. So, the staff pulled all new, pulled the wires through, ran all new conduit and pulled wires all the way through.
How many households do we actually have? I see you have one here listed as thirty, thirty thousand or three hundred thousand?
This is the numbering system. I have the exact number in the GIS, maybe we could...
I didn't think we actually had that many houses.
No.
I'm sure it's more than you'd actually think, but I feel...
Okay, how's enforcement?
How did the tenant provide proof of the extermination service?
Provided a signed service report from the extermination company with a, basically says proof of service.
So, it was after they did the service?
That's correct.
She was screenshotting things and not canceling, so I want to make sure this is after.
This is after, this is proof of service, absolutely.
She's had two so far?
That's correct, they're monthly.
Is there improvement, what feedback have you got on it?
I spoke with a resident on, I believe it was January fourth, and it's still, it's better, but it's still an issue.
It's gonna take a while. They just scurry from one to the other until it takes up to a year. Now, they're, and they're, they are all on a rotational treatment, correct? Every one of those houses, they were, are they still?
I believe, I mean, it's up to those individual property owners, but I believe every single one of them is having some type of treatment.
Probably would be better if it was on the same day. Mention who you talked to? Did you talk to Ian?
I did.
Okay, so while she would probably know, because they were, she was kind of coordinating, everybody was doing kind of a monthly and hoping that this would, so, you know, so if they all did it the same time every month, you know, get rid of them a lot easier.
Due to this roach infestation, who called the health department?
Nobody, we decided we aren't going to do that over Christmas.
Christmas is gone.
And I was sick with COVID for two weeks. So, we discussed it and decided that...
Didn't we discuss that us and the children and youth services who called?
That's not still out of the works if this doesn't straighten out.
But didn't we talk about in the meeting that we now have knowledge, and if we don't take any action by contacting those two agencies, that it would fall back to the borough?
I don't think we...
It was pretty out of it at the meeting.
Yeah, I don't think it falls under a category that they're gonna do anything about.
Well, that's not a decision for you to make. At the meeting, it was very clear that the two calls were going to be made and followed through. And that's a decision for those entities to make a decision on. Is the call going to be made?
If the situation is not remedied...
You just said it'd take, take a year to get rid of this, so are the...
No, he said it could, there are still some.
But is, is any action going to be taken by you or Andy to make those two phone calls?
Well, I think we'll probably have to discuss where we are from a zoning standpoint and from the IPMC currently with pulling three kids out of a house over the holidays. We thought we, since they had already cleaned up the garbage, had treatment twice before Christmas, we thought we would see if this would eliminate a lot of the problem before having to go that route.
Are the residents aware of that?
Residents are free to make the call.
But they left their meeting saying that you two were going to make those phone calls. Are the residents aware that those phone calls were never made?
Not all of them, because I don't know who all of them are, all the residents are in there.
We have the point of contact, did you tell the point of contact?
Yes, Ian, yes.
On picture one, the compliance date was October and it's January.
I reached out last month to that property owner to ask for an update. I did receive an email back in the new year that they are still working, but the contractor's having difficulty getting a road cut into that property for them to move those vehicles, just because of the wet conditions. So, it either needs to dry out or freeze for them to be able to remove the trees and cut a road into that property. I mean, at this point, it's, it's quiet on, on that road. And I realize that, you know, they're parked there, but we don't have any issues at this point.
What about the poultry number four, the chickens? That was passed on the ninth?
It's today.
It was today's night?
So, tomorrow it'll be, if they're still there, it'll be in violation.
Let me ask you, I'm sorry, are you going on to the next one, or not, because I'm still on chickens?
No, I was gonna ask, so tomorrow?
What is our, what is our ordinance state? I know you're allowed X amount of chickens, how many?
Uh, you have to, you have to name how many.
You can't have any chickens if you don't have any. Okay, that's, that was what I was gonna ask. And it has to be so many feet from the back of the house, correct?
Regulations with regards to placement of...
Okay, because number one, looking at those pictures that you had, that's right up against the, that fence is right against the back of the house.
I think they're gone, but they haven't heard anything for a while.
How is, obviously? Like thirty, take something. But the property, why, is it half an acre, is it?
Oh, yeah, I do, I think it's a little over half.
A half acre, yes. And I see the updated photo before and after, two and three, that is great. Thank you for that. Any, so, we passed the compliance date, December twenty-seventh.
Yep.
What has been done about that?
On December twenty-eighth, I emailed our point of contact and provided the initial pictures of the storage of junk and debris. I guess because of the holiday, I did make a phone call before to see an updated picture on the fifth with regard to the accumulation of junk and debris. There are, a good portion of the junk has been cleaned up on the back patio area. There are still two bags of garbage and miscellaneous items.
What about all the junk that is ground into the ground, all the garbage? Instead of just visually looking at it, oh, they picked those five bags, but what about everything this, the residents were saying?
If it's in the backyard, you can't see that from the pictures provided. There was a picture taken from the alley that everything looks like, if there are items underneath that are covered with leaves and ground.
Yeah, there's the door, there's a lot of wood.
Yeah, but the problem is that picture was not initially provided by the resident. So, we can file against that, but we're gonna have to send a separate violation with that picture and do the twenty days, because that picture was not initially provided as part of the complaint. I...
Does Wade go into the backyard to see that this violation has been remedied?
No, that's why we asked for updated pictures from the point of contact.
How do you know that a violation has been remedied in that backyard?
Look, we, we have permission from them to go into their backyard.
No, antennas, antennas yard, where the violation is. I don't understand how you can clear out a violation if after the violation... No, I'm just saying, my favorite question, af, once a violation is, is set out, how can it be cleared out if you cannot go into the backyard and make sure that it has been remedied?
We, we rely on, in this case, the point of contact to provide pictures, which is what she did, and it's not remedied.
If, but if you have no residents that can look in that backyard, how was it ever remedied?
We never went around in the first place. If you can't see it from right away, or we don't have a resident providing pictures, we don't have...
Well, maybe you did and they moved out of it, but if you don't have, I just, I can't imagine if there's a violation that's, that's been brought and you're able to file on it, how come Wade is not able to enter the property? It seems to be legally, once a violation is filed against you, to have, to the responsibility of the borough, to have to prove that it's been remedied.
When your solicitor and your magistrate answered that question already with the fact that you're not entering that person's property.
I just see that there has to be, so you have to.
The IPMC said for zoning infractions like that, you can go on the property.
You have to get an administrative search warrant.
The property maintenance code?
The founder's search warrant.
But your magistrate has specifically said that you do not have permission to enter that property.
Oh, okay.
At no time ever, when somebody's violated, you have no time ever you're able, able to enter their property on their back outside, not within their home, outside their property.
Well, sure.
You can't step on it, is that correct?
That's what she said.
I mean...
Well, not her, it has to be a lot, there has to be something.
The property maintenance code allows access, but that access needs to be granted somehow.
Granted by, it doesn't say who?
Just to justice, we have to get an administrative search warrant to avoid the trespassings.
I just don't see how everything, anything's ever enforced when...
When I was still working, we ran into this in Stewartstown, that there was a violation or suspected violation of property, and the authority solicitor said, you need a warrant, another property, unless the property owner gives you permission to go on there to look, you need a warrant from magistrate. And they're not gonna, for, in our case, the magistrate wasn't to give us a warrant, what we needed to go look at.
But we have permission from the neighbors to look over their fence to see if it's been taken care of, am I correct?
But, but, okay.
It's under leaves. Oh, what, what? Oh, you're talking about the out back?
But what does that matter when we have pictures that the resident provided? I, I don't, we have pictures of the resident provided.
I guess I was confused, we're talking about two different areas.
But I guess it's...
The area in the back, you don't have to be on her property, there's a public alley there.
Right, but that's not, that's not what she's saying.
Then do you get a leaf blower and blow away the leaves, so then you can see the ground? Because I mean, you can't enter, I mean, the leaves are covering it, so how can you verify that there isn't a layer of trash under those leaves with the cockroaches are still in? I guess is kind of where I'm getting at.
I don't know.
I guess it just doesn't seem...
Were those, those, those pictures were submitted from the, from the back, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, how much?
Yeah.
So, they're still, so it's passed, right? But she's done some, so how much more time is she going to be given on this wisteria and trash?
Wisteria has been cut at the ground level.
Okay, so that's been taken, so it has been taken care of. Well...
That's junk debris.
I mean, it's, it's removed, that it's not growing up the structure anymore at this point, because it's cut off the crown level.
Is it a pass, I'm not familiar, is it pass growing?
And that's the alley.
I mean, I think it's going to be continued.
Okay. So, have you closed that out yet?
No.
But you are gonna close out the wisteria?
I mean, I believe we have to in that case, yeah, but I, the jumping debris is still...
What is the timeframe for allowing this to continue? We're not supposed to have conversations going on, remember?
I'll talk to you about that. I'm sorry.
Going forward, what, what's the timeline for her to finish? Is it one bag a week has to be gone, is it, what, what is it, I don't know?
Well, there's two bags, it looks like, from the picture, that they're new. I asked Andy to give them a call and say, get us out of your hair and get rid of the...
and get rid of the last two bags that you got sitting right there. Imagine if part of the tote was full, what's wrong? They're still sitting there.
Are you saying all that is gone?
That's all gone, yeah.
Well, there's, mo, these items have been, these, well, no, I can't say most or majority. So these items have been cleaned up. There's a bag of garbage here and there's a bag of garbage here. That tote is still there and a lot of these, there's maybe a weed whacker and rake or some things here. So.
And yard equipment and some, you know, it's.
And is that tote, how you pointed out, full of water?
It is.
To breed mosquitoes?
Not this time of year.
I'm sure it's year round, but you know.
Yeah, it comes spring and summer, that's gonna be a mess.
And attract roaches, are the roaches attracted to water?
Moist areas.
Moist? Water and tote?
I think it's probably under water.
Well.
Self-division land development activity report.
Space for Franklin Square almost done? What's going on?
Buildings are moving along. They're hoping to get some occupancy permits issued, well, an occupancy issued, permit issued for the brewery. And, I mean, they're still working on apartments and some of the other commercial footouts in the building. So there's plenty to be done there yet.
They're open for the occupancy in January, or the end of January.
They were open for that, yes, we'll see.
Yeah.
For the R and M unit freedom, was it always 34 single family homes? I thought I remember seeing 31, 32, was it 34?
I believe it's been 34.
He's drawing the concept plan and review, what's?
Well, that was just that one page, that was just that one page review that went to, just kind of an in-house quick review and then went to Shrewsbury Township. Shrewsbury Township is completing their kind of review and telling them what they need to fix and then they'll come back. But there has been no update outside of that.
Rick?
All right. So, yeah, I'm not gonna reread everything, I'm just gonna go over a couple highlights. Farmer's Market, Melissa, who was running the farmer's market in her resignation as the marketing director. And right now, it doesn't sound like they're going to redo it next year. But if anybody is interested in taking that up, they should contact somebody on the recommission to do so. I think I spoke with Andrew about this already. And I didn't realize that there wasn't an ABD defibrillator. This is something that Rich Garvey brought up. So there is one in the building, but not in the gymnasium side, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know what exactly we need to do to get one installed on the gymnasium side.
And do we have one here when we grow that up?
There should be one here and there should be one in the gymnasium.
Yeah.
The senior center has one that they keep locked up. Is that one able to be utilized in the hall? Is it open to them?
As I say, who actually owns that?
That would be the senior centers.
Yeah, that's.
Could there be discussion to see if we can mount that in the hallway so that the senior center has, can you use that?
We can absolutely, I mean, it would be up to them and where they would like the location to be. I mean, they want easy access, obviously, they want to go up and down.
Well, but it's locked up downstairs, you know, if she's not in, it's in her office and they're in room 201 or 101 there, you know. Seems to be out of a locked room would be the best place for it. But if you could reach out to them and ask them.
No.
That would be $1,500, $2,000 that they're gonna have to spend on top of one for here.
Concerts in the park, decided to have two concerts in the park this coming summer. First one will be held, excuse me, August 19th and will be part of the continuing Susquehanna Centennial Celebration. That band is to be determined. The second concert will be another karaoke event and that will be September 23rd. And will again be hosted by Dana Dolan. Is there any other questions about anything else on? I'm gonna submit that to the minutes.
The one thing, the vandalism at the community center that they reported, or is it here?
These are their minutes, that was just something that Rick had.
Rick was supposed to call you. Vandalism last, last, what? You're the liaison.
Rich, okay, Rich thought, since my wife plays pickleball, she'll come home to me, tell me, I'll call you and you'll take care of it. I say it doesn't work like that. If Rick has a problem or something comes up, they need to contact you directly, not through my wife.
Or the liaison could bring it to the office.
But apparently, there was somebody in there on a Sunday. Is that the last Sunday?
Several people entered, yes.
Yeah, with tennis rackets, tennis balls, racket ball, rackets. And they left them there and they apparently beat the heck out of the pickleball nets, the metal, but if, they had to be in there on a Sunday somehow.
And the door was unlocked.
And the door was unlocked.
Thursday before that meeting also. In addition to the door being unlocked to allow people in there on Sunday.
Does anyone have pictures or anything?
Rick said that he had an eyewitness, he didn't give the name, and I asked him to call the office. So I do have one item, I've gone back and forth all day, whether I wanted to bring this up or not. If I am supposed to be the liaison with Rick, I think that there's been some other information that has been given to Rick outside of my knowledge. I don't wanna say circumventing, but if I have an issue with Southern Regional Police, I've gone to Kim. Somebody has an issue, they have not come to me, I view that as a difference. Not an overreach, but not the correct way to go about that. That's what I'll say about that.
I understand that, but back to the community center. Whose responsibility is to lock that door? Make sure that it is locked daily so that there's no vandalism and nobody entering that, that should not be there.
Anybody that has a key that opens the doors. So the senior center, Tayside Location, the Boy Scouts, the Lions Club, pickleball. I mean, where does it end? How can you say that?
Well, it's mostly at the gym, right? The auditorium is what you're talking about, am I right?
Well, I think, I think. People are getting in to the community center.
What we need to do is we need to get the key fob system in as soon as we can.
But it'll be, at earliest at this point, due to supply issues and we do have to modify a couple doors to put the handles on. It'll be probably mid-Febuary.
I mean, that's, that's really the best we can do.
It's nobody's responsibility of this borough to check to see that that door is locked at the end of the day.
Well, at the end of, at the end of the day, it'd be 10 o'clock when volleyball's done. And if somebody, would you recommend that somebody comes up at the end of every event?
Well, pickleball, two nights a week.
If that's what it is, that's what it is.
Pickleball, two nights a week, who's in charge of volleyball? That should be that person Monday nights. So there's three nights. Saturday, of course, they're playing pickleball. Whoever leaves there should make sure Saturday that door is locked.
Somebody goes in there and ODs or something, then what? The door was left unlocked. We just had a citizen OD here in New Freedom in the last two weeks. I mean, kids go in there, kids get injured.
If they OD, where does it, why does it matter where they did it at?
Because if they are going and gaining access into the community center.
What?
What, our door should have been locked. Somebody should be responsible within this borough to make sure. So they OD, whatever, wrong analogy if you don't like that one. Kids go in there to skateboard around and he breaks his arm.
Okay, well, the, I mean.
Let's change to that one, I mean, what?
But you're arguing a point that we have already tried to address, which is we're going to get key fobs installed. Until that point, I'm not sure, unless you're volunteering to go up there every night and do that. If you wanna be part of the solution, not part of the problem, then volunteer to go up there every night and make sure the door is locked.
I think I volunteer for quite enough around this place and there are a lot of paid positions in this place that could be doing that.
Okay, so we'll start paying employees overtime to go up there every night.
Overtime to check the door. Oh, my gosh. But before, before this month, before this month.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I think, you know, we have addressed the problem. I mean, if you do want an employee up, yeah, I mean, you would have to pay them overtime. Go in at 10 o'clock at night.
Send them up there 10 minutes early when they leave at night.
That's too close to do it. And what I kept being told is after the first of the year, it's gonna change. After, went out to the first of the year and it hasn't changed.
Their lease has been extended a month.
So it's tasteful occasion, they're the ones that should have had that door locked on Sunday and Thursday?
Their conditions have extended until the end of January.
That's true.
So are you sending them a notice and putting it in a file that they have left the door unlocked numerous times over the past week? We've sustained vandalism?
When it's been brought up, when? Right now, correct?
It was brought up on Thursday and your liaison didn't bring it to you.
He mentioned to me that there was damage from pickleball and that Rick would be calling, or someone from Rick would be calling to give me more information. That didn't occur.
He could have given you all the information, he was at the meeting. He has all the information that Rick's gonna give you.
Can Rick do something and report to this board?
So for clarity, I did report that. But that, I also think that if somebody has firsthand information, they need to be the one to report that.
Then why didn't you reach out to Rich?
There's an eyewitness, I mean, that.
There is no eyewitness.
He said he had one.
They just saw people, they couldn't identify them and you were there when he said that they couldn't identify them. But, and it was brought to your attention, why didn't you reach out to Rich? That we've heard that we've had vandalism in our community center. Can you give me more information?
I reached out to the fire company to see if they saw anything Sunday at any time and I haven't gotten a response. I have a meeting with them Thursday night.
Delete this open-ended and say, you know, lots of key fobs come around.
You need to get the key fob system because you have too many people with keys. It's the same thing, it's the same thing with the chicken coop years ago. Everybody had keys to that chicken coop all the time. It was always left open, stuff happened up there.
Get a locksmith down there tomorrow, change the lock on that entry door, give it to the Leesies and it's done. Don't gotta worry about it no more, right?
Pay for a locksmith for a month and a half.
A month.
Okay, let people keep entering it while it's, while it's open.
So make some notion, it'll be done now.
This is what they wanna do. It'll stay open and nobody's responsible and football as well at the end of the day.
You know, I talked about, we talked about EMS and fire funding.
That, in the financial report, it says fire and EMS donation. I think we really need to be sure that we segregate anything that goes up there because if it goes to fire company, they're gonna put it in their account and EMS is not gonna know or see it. They should be two separate checks, if it's one for EMS and one for fire.
Okay, I think we should probably break that out separately in our budget then.
Yeah, I think, I, can we still do that?
Well, I mean, the check's been issued, but we can do that for 23. If we're not increasing expenditure, we're just breaking another line item out, which.
Let me know how much of that was to go to fire, how much to EMS.
All, it was all EMS.
No, I think it was, it was $10,000 for training and $13,500 as a general donation.
To EMS?
No, that was fire.
All fire?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then it doesn't matter.
No, I thought 13,500 was a general donation and 10,000 was for, general donation for fire, 10,000 was for EMS training.
Well, I thought that's what it was.
I'll look it up.
Yeah, just checking, yeah.
And let, let me know before Thursday and then I'll make sure that it goes to the right department.
Susquehanna.
Well, the only thing I really have to say is the, I've contacted, or I got in contact with the Heritage Council and that they're working on that book to fill the next 50 years. Or they're working on that now, so.
Okay, I, if you could, Bernal, could you put together a, just a one sheet of the events you're going to do and the expected dates?
Yeah.
And maybe send it to everyone on council so we know what's going on with that. I know Jenny's gonna get involved in the one aspect of, you know, so. So I think, I think we're getting, I guess the concern is we're getting pretty close to have, we should have a lot of this stuff, you know, in the can or at least people assigned who are gonna be doing it.
I'm sorry, who's writing the book? Who's putting it together?
Heritage Council, they have a regular committee or a regular group that's, that's going out.
I guess Donna is probably heading that, right?
I'm not sure.
Donna Pease?
I was gonna say, she might be now because.
She probably is, she's written several books. Yeah. So let me know what you want me to do. Council chamber, I, they, they.
I was, I was supposed to have a meeting with them and unfortunately, COVID didn't. That was the week, one of the weeks, I was out for at least a good two weeks and then we hit Christmas and here we are. So I will try to set that up for the rest of us to meet with both of them. I think we're looking a lot cheaper than what we originally were.
What company is it?
It's two different companies.
It's not Best Buy anymore?
No.
Okay.
No. Two local firms. One is working with Shrewsbury Township on their new one and the other guy is working on the new school system over in Susquehanna. They, they know what they're doing and, and like I told to Andrew, as long as we can get a little bit of help from public works.
What about, you know, you just said something that just, with, if the school, you know, the school has that whole AV thing set up and it's like a class and the kids work in it? Is that something that we can talk to the school and see if somebody?
Cause I've been trying to get ahold of the guy that originally set that up. He was a teacher at Hereford in charge of AV and taught it and he and his wife have been in France for the last 60 days, so. I ain't calling France on myself.
Any other public comment? Would entertain a motion.
Motion is here, second.
All in favor?
Aye. What are we gonna do with these land development, all this stuff? We don't discuss any of that, it's just for.
That's for the planning. FYI stuff. I apologize for the commentary and I just can't see. Separate the room. It's probably just one of those.
No, we went to Florida for Christmas. I did just fifteen yesterday. Just up in Red South.